All right, I want to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of Community Unit District 186. And Mrs. Heinz, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Dorr?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Yvaldi?
Here.
Mr. Rungy?
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the approval of the agenda, and we do have one addition to that. It'll be under new business, we're going to add a memorandum of understanding for adding two members to the curriculum council. Other than that, Dr. Evers, it's as printed, correct?
Yes, I sent that in my email to the board about the addition of the curriculum council.
And the board was given a copy at your desk as well, so you do have that.
Of the MOA.
The revision under new business, that's supposed to be informational, right, instead of action?
Which item? Item?
Number five.
I believe you.
It says informational in the agenda, don't you?
Yeah.
You're big when it does say informational.
Is there a health and safety, a COVID update that is missing, or?
I'm just trying to add it till we know.
Okay.
All right, Eleanor?
Have I time to talk about it?
Talk about what?
If not. Any COVID questions we might have, or?
We've already approved the plan, so it's all in the hands of the administration and our team.
So we can't ask any questions, is what you're saying?
Well, it's now on the agenda.
Well, it doesn't have to be on the agenda for us to ask questions about it.
Well, I mean, I'm not understanding the questions because we've already approved the plan.
But there should be some type of update to the public about what it looks like, the health, the safety, the numbers. I mean, there's no updates to the public, so I would think that that information would come out now, and there isn't any.
Have we not been directed by the department?
We've been working with the Health Department as well as the board's attorney on communication.
But you're not putting anything out to the public about what the current situation is?
Parents are trying to make decisions about whether or not they should send their students back for second quarter, and they don't know because they're not feeling like they're getting any information.
Well, they can go right to their building principals and get the information.
Right, and I think that every building principal in their communication at the midterm with that is giving some type of summary on their building level.
Well, I have three students in three separate buildings, and I've not received any communication about anything like that.
I would ask them.
Why should people have to ask? I mean, this is information that the public should have.
Well, again, we're being guided by the Health Department on what we can say and what we can't say.
I don't see all the other schools in S.I.E. with the big press release.
Sure you are.
No, we're not, no, we're asking for updates.
Update of information.
I'm not asking for names of people who have tested positive.
What update are you asking?
How many numbers, how many current people are under quarantine due to being tested positive? Or how many are being contact traced?
I think anytime we've had an incident, that information has gone out.
I've only seen Keeners, that's the only one I've seen.
Okay, why are we discussing this? Because this agenda has been out since Friday, and nobody and nobody has brought up this before. Nobody has said, have you received any emails?
You don't just bring up things about meetings in class, it's a public meeting.
You have ample opportunity to email her and ask her to add something to the agenda. You can email Terry, you can call Rick, you can call Kevin, you can call any of us. But you wait until you get to this meeting and hijack the whole meeting just because you have an agenda. This is the agenda for the meeting, and this is what we are voting on to approve.
Public meeting, and there can be an update.
And may a school board conduct business not listed on its agenda at a regular meeting, and the answer is yes. And this was when you asked if we wanted anything added to the agenda.
Okay, the board two months ago approved the plan. Now, it's now up to the superintendent and her team of people that's on that committee on how they move forward with that. We don't, the board doesn't necessarily need to be told absolutely every little thing that's being done, every expenditure she has, we have an updated.
I don't think that anybody's asked for that.
No, nobody's asking for that.
You're asking for numbers, and I'm telling you that we've been guided by the Health Department on.
And I don't see any other school or any other organization in the area putting numbers out.
Most schools do.
I haven't seen any numbers from Carbondale, I haven't seen any numbers from S.I.U.
Have you looked at their websites? It's posted on the website.
Carbondale's full remote, so people aren't having to make decisions about how many cases and how they're at risk.
The university posts the number of cases on their website.
I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the agenda with one addition. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes District 186 regular board meeting minutes dated August the 18th of 2020, tri-county minutes dated August 12th, 2020, tri-county bills for September 2020 applications and reports. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Item number six is the approval of District 186 bills for September 2020. I'll entertain questions from the board. There's two packets, so if you would please, if you have a question, let us know if it's from the packet with six pages or 21 pages, and then the page from that particular package you're asking from. Any questions from the board?
I have a few. Page four of six. And I took it as the first packet. It's a $2,000, it just says green balance up. What does that mean?
The middle school athletic impressed account, those are fees, athletic officials. They have been recorded in, we didn't have a secretary for a while, so just bringing that up to the balance amount of the impressed account of middle school. And so those checks are all written for, you know, by the middle school athletic director for officials, and those are probably, the majority of those were for actually last fiscal year.
So it was bringing them up to date, not like.
Right, not increasing the amount, but just bringing them back up to the level in that budget.
Page one of 21, and that's the second packet. I'm just curious, how many more payments should we need to make? Oh, I'm sorry, on the H-bag?
A.W.?
Mm-hmm.
That's final.
Payment of five, so that's the last one.
That's actually final on A.W. We will probably still have one more on to Heartland Services, you think one will finish it? Final on the sports complex. So yeah, I'm sorry, I should have written final.
Question on the one of 21, the Athletico, is that, how are they doing that if there's not, that's just later on? The contract is payable now, but they'll be doing the training later?
They're working with, I'm assuming, I mean, I'm not at the high school, but I would assume that the trainer is working with the athletes. I mean, they're contracted to do that.
Like just golf and cross country?
And, I mean, it's typically for high school, but I really can't answer that because we have a contract for them to do training for sports all year round.
Was there contact days for football?
There's 20, and they started last week.
Yeah, I thought so.
And so they're doing like some of that, the strength and conditioning and those type of services related to like the weight programs and then the contact sport activities that are not really, I'm sorry, they're meeting, but they're not doing contact activities, they're doing more strength and conditioning. But that would cover the Athletico during those, when they do those 20 non-season days. So it will definitely not be a typical year because they'll be doing a lot more in different seasons than what they've done in the past. So from November till, and they'll go later, they'll go till late June, early July with those baseball seasons ending, the springs that are really being pushed to summer.
Does that contract have to change or anything?
They already, when we talked about that, they gave us contact days, and they knew that there would be some malleability to this, like malleability to this plan this year because of how the plans took shape and the postponement. So they're doing the last right now, but then November 15th, when basketball, when winter sports and wrestling, when they start to, goes into the football and spring. And you're right, they will be working a lot later than what they typically do. Almost foregoing, yeah. Off-season and baseball softball, so it will just distribute differently with an easier beginning with the cross country and golf being the two significant ones right now.
And nine of 21, the bleacher inspection, was that from before?
No, we have to.
Every year?
It's not every year, I think it's every other year, we have to have our bleachers inspected.
I have, sorry, I have one back on page two of 21. All the, it's like under the biology class supplies, and I think there were some other ones somewhere else, like different supplies for classes, and I was just curious, are those being, like, what's happening with the students that are remote? Do they send those supplies home? How are they doing?
If you're planning on sending them at home, you probably need to check with Mr. Allemeyer. I'm not sure what they're doing for remote students, because a lot of these things are for dissection. And so I don't know what they're doing, that would be a personal question. I'm sorry.
Is that my guess saying for art class on 16 of 21, all those supplies, those aren't being sent home to students?
They are, actually, there are supplies being bundled. And it's a little different year because typically we're buying a lot of clay to do in class, and they're not doing that this year. So the supplies that are bought are things that can be more individual, and then they can talk to Mary Patterson about that, that idea, doing some of those, sending things home so students can do those assignments remotely. And I know she, I've been in her class while she was modeling for students who are remote on how to like complete the activity.
So, but, just to ask Cody about biology, if those are going home?
Yeah, honestly, it never even occurred to me about, I do know that we had to buy, because of social distancing, we had to purchase more of whatever they're dissecting out of, whether it's frogs or whatever, but more, so you know, there isn't the contact because typically you have several students working on one, and they're not doing that, so we have to buy more. But I didn't. And I think that they're doing, and I don't want to make a blanket statement, I do know that some of the instructors have found digital dissections, so you can do frog dissections with like, where it's intuitive, like when you dissect and you're asked to identify this part of the frog and then dissect it, that it actually, you can do a mid-line incision and then dissect digitally. I don't know for all activities if they'll do that, but they can't really send live frogs home on school buses with lunch, or like with lunches, or leave them up in the front office while people come to get them. So I think that for the most part, the instructors have tried to find similar activities that are dissection, but they're digital dissection instead of having live animals and those supplies that would be more temperature regulated.
That's a good question. I'm just curious.
Right. And I know, like at the elementary level, they've been doing, like the art supplies have been going home with a lot of the teachers, like some of those activities have been going home in their pack activities. So the packets, like they put them in the packets K to five, but I don't know about the art supplies. I know that they send the art activities.
The activities are sent home, but they're not, they're not supplied.
They're not including the supplies. I knew that, because I get the email that they're sending home that, trying to keep them all, instead of having five packets come home, it just would go to like the grade level where the teacher, the specials put them in their packets, but I didn't know about if the supplies go home at the elementary, and that can be something that we can consider if there's like a.
Some students may need that.
If there's like an art kit that they might need, that they're thinking, okay, we're doing pastels, we're doing watercolors, we're doing, that could be something that we could put as an additional packet. That's something that I can talk to the two elementary teachers about because I do know, like you said, Ms. Patterson has come up with ways to provide it for her students at the high school, so we can do similarly with those. Some of those supplies might have been on the school supply list, but you're right, there'd be students that still may be losing.
Anyone else? And I'll entertain a motion to approve the District 186 bills for September.
Second?
Second.
Third.
Mrs. Heinz?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Yvaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number seven is communications, and I understand we have four.
Could I ask, could you tell us who it's from first?
Sure.
Just because we're like sitting here guessing the whole time.
This one's from Deanne Melton, she's a kindergarten teacher at General John A. Logan. Dear Dr. Evers and school board members, I am writing to inform you of my intent to take board-approved maternity leave after I deliver my child. My expected date of delivery is December 26, 2020, and it is my plan to work up until I deliver. My intentions are to take nine weeks off using my accumulated sick days. My anticipated return date is March 15th. I have already been in contact with Ms. Vicky and will continue to be in contact with her throughout the remainder of my pregnancy to discuss the exact dates of my leave. I know these are trying times, I will work to prepare for my future substitute in hopes to make the transition smooth for my students and their parents. I will also be willing to assist remotely from home as much as I can during my leave. Please contact me with any questions or concerns.
I'm assuming the administration is going to make the recommendation.
Recommend the maternity leave, yes, please.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation. In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next one's from Ellie Kirk, secretary at the high school. Dear District Board 186, please accept my request for my maternity leave starting September the 11th, 2020 until October 21st, 2020. I will be taking six weeks off using my accumulated sick days. Please reach out if you have any questions. Thank you.
I concur that that's the recommendation for.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This is from Darlene Keller, cook at General John A. Logan. I would like to inform you that I will be retiring as of October 2nd, 2020. I have truly enjoyed working for the school district over the years, and while I will enjoy my retirement, I will also miss being part of the team. Thank you, Darlene Keller.
I would recommend the retirement request.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So may.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This one's from Andre Stewart, volleyball coach at the high school. Dear Dr. Evers and school board members, it is with a heavy heart that I write my letter of resignation as the JV volleyball coach for Murphysboro High School. This decision did not come easily. With the season being moved to the spring, my daughter will only be four months old when the 2021 volleyball season starts. After many discussions with my husband, we feel this decision is what is best for our growing family. I feel it is best to give my position to someone who is fully focused on making our volleyball team and program the best it can be. I hope to be back coaching for Murphysboro volleyball program again one day in the future. Thank you for your understanding and consideration.
I support her decision to retire from that position.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So may.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight is fiscal items, and I think I saw one.
Just one. This is from Rebecca Bastian at Carethers. Thank you, let's see, who's, Dollar General Literacy Foundation. Thank you for applying for a grant from the Dollar General Literacy Foundation. We are pleased to inform you that your organization has been selected to receive the following grant. Youth and literacy type, project title is called Funding Freckle for Our Flock. Grant award is $3,000. We are proud to support your efforts to promote literacy and wish you every success in the coming years. Sincerely, the Dollar General Literacy Foundation.
What was that again?
$3,000, oh, sorry.
Say the title three times.
Say the title, Jim.
Say it three times, real quick.
All right, thank you. Item number nine is the Freedom of Information Act request. It looks like we have one.
From Smart Recruitment for purchase records from August 11th, 2019, at 11:00 p.m. to current. It was pretty limited, easy to comply, and it was done in a timely manner.
And we get that every year from that, a couple times a year from that same vendor, and they do it statewide.
All right, item number 10 is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Are there any employee concerns? Yes, sir.
My name is Darrell Young, a fourth grade teacher at Carethers, and I really only stand up today to introduce myself to those of you who may not already know me. I'm the new M.E.A. president, starting actually last month. So I didn't have anything earth-shattering to say today except to introduce myself and say, obviously, it's extraordinary times, and it's really my hope that communication lines can stay open between our groups. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you. And congratulations, I think.
Thank you.
All right, let's move into old business. The first item under the old business is the approval of District 186 fiscal year budget.
The administration recommends board approval of the budget as presented, and I will say on the first page in the little box, it does say unbalanced budget. However, deficit reduction plan is not required this time because of the fund balances that we have. So I just wanted to point that out, in case you wonder why the deficit reduction plan within the body of the budget is not completed because we're not required to do that.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the District 186 fiscal year '21 budget.
So may.
In a second? Second. Mrs. Heinz?
Mrs. Yvaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number two is the district financial update. Dr. Evers?
We kind of talked about some of the issues during the budget. The only thing I will add is I did talk to the treasurer's office on Friday, and they expect to be sending out our first property tax payment by the end of September. So I really hadn't anticipated getting it that soon, so I was kind of.
That is very quick.
Well, I think the first installment was due the 17th.
17th, yeah.
Also, there's really no penalties this year to pay.
Right, and so that's what surprised me, as long as the second installment was paid by November 17th. So they're going to have enough to do a payment at the, I think they understand difficult financial times for everyone and are trying to get those payments out. So I told them we truly appreciate those efforts.
Did they give any indication on what percentage?
They didn't, they didn't say, but I was just excited to be getting some.
Absolutely.
So typically, we get two pretty large payments. You know, when you think about this, a lot of the banks that are paying escrow, property taxes in escrow through people's mortgages, that's how I have mine, they've already paid those by the first payment, so they have a lot of those things already. So typically, we get, you know, maybe a little larger with the first time, the second one, then we get a small one, typically sometimes January, even in February.
And the COVID supplies, when we talked to Mr. Ripley, the COVID supplies that we purchased during the summer, and we bought in pretty large quantities because the dates for arrival were so obscure at some points, like we were, they were just like a very large spread on days. We have, we're tracking well with all of our supplies, the sanitizers, the backpack units, they've learned how to do some of the adjustments because it was a really, really, like, almost goopy spray. So now they have a really good misting system down for all of our surfaces. So the supplies are, I think that will be projected during the summer and will likely carry us for most of our supplies, with the exception of maybe the wipes. The teachers are using mostly the spray with the paper towels for cleaning desks. They'll spray and the kids will wipe it, but we also do have a considerable amount of the Lysol wipes, those are just harder to come by, so we believe that we did a lot of purchasing during the summer to make sure that we had everything on hand that was needed, so I think we're in good position for that.
Very good, thank you both. Item number three is the approval of the General John A. Logan Cooling Tower bid, which is enclosure number two, in your packet, and who's going to handle this? Is that I.N. or Jim?
Jim, do you want to talk about it?
We can, I can too, I have the volume there.
That's what I'm just doing.
Maybe hit it? I found it. Did you find it first?
We opened bids on August 25th, and we received four bids from four different contractors, ranging from $118,000 to $143,795, the low bid being from A.W. Pointing and Heating. And that would be the administration's recommendation to award the contract for services to A.W. Pointing and Heating.
Questions from the board?
Jim, across the bids, was there anything jumped out for that big of a discrepancy?
Only because I know what they did, they kept their price right before they walked in the door. They, he told me what the price was before they even walked in the door. They still would have been loved with their gun substantially.
But it's less than $4,000 spread between the next three.
Yeah.
The next three bidders, so it was pretty significant difference between $118 and $139.
No concerns about the A.W. project?
No, no.
And they're wrapping up phase two of the middle school project.
It's just a bunch of stuff.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the Logan Cooling Tower bid. Second? Second. Mrs. Heinz?
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Yvaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number four is press number 105 updates, which were handed out last month.
And those focus on investigating complaints, Title IX sexual harassment procedures, agreements procedures, slawserian terms related to Title IX, workplace harassment, harassment of students, administrative procedures for pandemic flu and other viruses, the nondiscrimination policies, the identification of a nondiscrimination coordinator and some tweaking of that language, and equal education opportunities were where there were revisions made within the existing press policy. So those were where there were additions or reductions and additions. So those were the areas for 105 in the last month's packet.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
I have questions. The nondiscrimination coordinator is now also the Title IX coordinator? Is that, was that part of the, okay, so they have to do both, and there's additional training, or?
At this point, they have not done mandatory training, but I would believe that there would be some.
Who is that person?
Those positions are posted on the webpage for nondiscrimination.
Because weren't those two different people?
No, we have the harassment, Jan and I are the.
They're harassment coordinators.
So the complaint managers or something?
They're the complaint managers, they're the coordinator, I'm the complaint manager.
Okay.
And they're separate people, like, so they go to them, and then I.
So you'll be doing the nondiscrimination and the Title IX?
Correct.
Okay. And there was a whole list of different things that you have to have posted on the web, like new things, like about breaches of information and all the different policies. Are we good on all that, or?
See, well, it's a, okay. When we update, when we accept these changes.
There's only 177 pages.
It is, when we accept those changes, we can add those sections, and I have the highlights in my packet of the changes, so.
And I'm wondering if there's been, like, a thought about having a committee, like a policy committee to, because I mean, like, I mean, I assume everybody read the 177 pages. No, I didn't.
I actually do read them.
I mean, I do too, and I mean, there's a lot of stuff in there, and to make sure that you're in compliance is hard to keep up with, especially for just, I mean, namely, it's the three of you, right?
Right.
To come up with ideas about how to put these things in place and how to, has that been considered, or?
I don't know, I mean, I have, in the last three districts that I've worked, and four districts that I've worked in, there hasn't necessarily been a press policy committee because the changes and recommendations are made pretty much unilaterally across the state. But that doesn't necessarily mean that input would not be encouraged. But then there's, I don't know if it would be something, I don't know how to, because the press policy changes might be 170 pages this month, and then nothing next month, and then 20, and then, I mean, it would just. Some just don't have, there were meat and potatoes to this, there were other things that are just, you know, very, like substantive changes and then like, you know, non-substantive changes, so.
Like you're supposed to have a sex equity committee, you're supposed to have community members in the district. I mean, do we have that, or? Those are the type of things I'm talking about, like within the.
And there's specific, like, jobs of people that are mentioned in those that I don't know that we have anybody assigned to that particular role, or even if we have anyone. Or even if we have anyone doing that, you know?
Quite, I don't know. And just all the update on the agreements policy for the bullying, and, I mean, it was just a lot, so.
There is quite a bit. I would concur that there is for this month. And then looking at the, like, a procedural tree to make sure that there's some good graphics on the webpage for who are on those committees, and then, and delineation of those roles. I do believe that that can be something that we can do on that wavelength of a dime in there.
And I assume, I mean, I assume you're, the Teamsters and M E A are looking at these things, because there was... Where's the notes I have about... There was, in 520, there was enforcement on the law governing the complaint section. I mean, have those things been discussed with the bargaining units?
The complete, like, process hierarchy?
There was a different, there was like, a, yeah, there was just like one line in there that had been added.
And, yeah, off the top of my head, like I said, I read them, and I didn't make a second set, so those are my working copies.
Okay.
I read, highlighted. I tried to do redacted and...
And, yeah. And I talked to you last month about, did you ask us, I asked you about the, like, they used to make them, because I was on the policy committee in my district before. They used to have it to where you could tell everything that was changed in there.
And then those little mini bullets, and you're having to write. They changed their way that they do things. So they underline, which is confusing because if you print them out, you're underlining, you have to discern between case law, like, because those are underlined, and then also hyperlinks.
Yeah.
So the hyperlinks, it's a little harder with, and most of the time when you have 170 pages, I can't do that much. I strain form on my tablet to do that either, so I print them off. And so then you have to, it used to be these little, and I don't know why it was in that press policy, that was their decision to try to do more of the footnotes and then underlining, but I think the underlining gets really confusing with the hyperlinks and then the case law references. And even the Illinois School Code references are all underlined too. So it really, when you don't have them in color and you print them off, it really, so there was a few that I highlighted in yellow that should not have been highlighted. I'm like, oh, that's a case law reference, so.
Yeah, because some of those, I did skim over some of the, I was like, I don't really need to know what case it was that decided that policy. Okay, well, something to think about, definitely.
It is something to think about, and let's see if they start to level off. But I agree, when we look at any of these substantial, because the last two months have been pretty significant.
And the last time it was, I mean, I don't know, it was 200 pages too, but it was mostly dealing with COVID and the policies you're supposed to have in place and the committees. And, but this one, I mean, it's going into more the harassment and the bullying.
Employee and the student side, right.
And making sure that you're in compliance with all of those things.
Agreed.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the press update.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is the renewal of the lease with S I U Head Start, which is enclosure number three. And I believe this is the one that we tabled from last month, so our attorney could look at it.
The attorney sent the language and with just some minor revisions, nothing substantive, they just, and the language was accepted by S I U Head Start as presented by the attorney. So they just digested it and were comfortable with the changes, so.
And we added an exhibit, which is actually my exhibit, because I asked for, where's Exhibit A, because we referred to that in the prior contract, and no one could put their hands on what Exhibit A was, so I made one.
Which is just a, which is just a matter of accolade with, you know, with where the rooms are. Here we go.
But it was important since they referred to it, and so you know which places they're talking about.
So, yeah, so Terry did review, because my eyes were just shot that time, did review the language that our attorneys sent us versus what S I U sent back to us, and it was the same information, so.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation to renew the lease with S I U Head Start.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Rundy?
Yes, motion carries. Now we'll move into new business. First item is the library grant expenditure report application approval, which is enclosure number four in your packet.
And that's an annual grant that the district applies for every year, and we end up getting about $1,400 to be split per cafeteria for our students between our four libraries.
Mr. Weaver White does that every year, doesn't he?
Mr. White writes the grant, and we're just requesting board approval to submit the grant this year.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is the Back to Books Library Grant, which is enclosure number five.
It's, again, a grant that supports materials for the libraries. It's...
Are athletes doing a special project with the books, or, you know?
Not yet. I don't think that they've identified, you know, how the...
Okay, because I know, I was just thinking it was something like, Don Taylor's doing a special thing with the terriers.
I saw that on the news, where different ones are reading books.
Yeah, and they come into the schools and read to the kids normally, so.
Though, I know that the library is looking on potentially doing some, they, the district has an FAA-approved drone, and so, starting in October, we may do, like, just some piloted drone delivery of some library materials. That might be something new and novel. I saw it on the news a while ago, and then when Mr. Tripp told me, oh, we have an FAA-approved drone. So he started having, Jeff Weaver White had conversations with the librarian in Virginia, who actually was on the news. They went back and forth and talked and emailed back and forth about how they did their drone delivery. So it'll be something new and exciting and fresh, and so we're going to pilot and see how it works. They have to find some type of package and then to deliver, like, deliver that's wide enough for the drone to deliver and drop. And then they're trying to come up with a way for the students to send their GPS coordination. So even if they were their grandmas, they could send it and request that the books be picked up again. So it's something that will be piloted in small, and we'll just see how many can do. It's something new and exciting, but I know, like, we're trying to be creative too on how we do some of the things, but I thought that was really neat that Terry reads books.
I just, yeah, since it said athletes, I just thought maybe there was a special thing, but I didn't see anything as it didn't look, so.
Do they have the FAA training to fly the drone? Yeah, and they're afraid of drones and everything. Yep, they have it all, and that was part of the C T E funds that Mr. Tripp utilized, and has been doing a little bit of practicing, but he'll, he said that they feel like they can do the first delivery or two beginning in October. So you'll start to probably see that at, once we get to a house successfully or two, then we'll figure out how the return works. And they had a specific, they use a commercial drone delivery service. This is going to be using our existing drone. So they're going to work with the C T E students to actually deploy the drone, so it will be nice because it will be student-led. But I know with the projects for, Mr. Weaver White is really working to get the students back into the library, doing different activities. So I am confident that he will include the athletes. And I know even last week, they came up with ways to bring Captain Applesauce to the classroom in that, in a digital heat format. The mayor and Captain Applesauce read books to the students. So I foresee it being utilized as more recorded activity, so that the remote students, as well as the in-person students, and also keeping our limited footprint of visitors into the setting. So they're going to probably do more recorded and release, so that everyone gets to release similar, like, what Captain Applesauce and the mayor did last week, so.
So this is...
But I didn't write the grant, so I don't want to totally speak for them, but I know that...
This is a grant application, so I guess this is board approval to apply for the grant.
For this grant, correct.
$4,900, purchase of books in the sports genre, promote more reading to student athletes. So, and I'm just seeing this, that that'll be reimbursement, so if the grant's awarded, we'll spend the money, and then we'll do expenditure reports and get the actual money, so. Fingers crossed.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation for the Back to Books Library Grant. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is the approval of the inter-agency cooperative agreement with migrant education Head Start, which is enclosure number six.
And that's to sustain the relationship with migrant education Head Start through Carbon Illinois. And that's the evaluation and consideration for any students who could fall into that migrant population, for the...
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is a memorandum of understanding with Center Stone, which is enclosure number seven.
And this is a new grant. This is, last year in Carbondale, they had a family resource developer who worked, and they're expanding the grant. And we were asked by the R O E to consider participating, and so this family resource developer works with the building-level social workers and teachers to give referrals for actually supporting families. And so the school level would identify the families and refer them to the Center Stone family developers. So it's really more of an outreach, family support. What they need is like a quarterly use of the building for, you know, group meetings. And so we'd have to just use those universal processes or ask that they be conducted if they can't be socially distanced and spaced through Google Meet, so.
And this is no charge to the family?
No cost to us. It's just an additional support piece. And they said that it was a preliminary grant last year in Carbondale. They were expanding it up. So the grant actually begins November 1st, and it goes through October 31st, so it gives us a little bit of time to kind of identify those families. So the social workers can find families that have sometimes multiple children and multiple levels of support and needs, so.
But no cost to us, but also no cost to the families using it?
None. Not at all?
Good.
And they do like inter-agency support, so it sounds like it should be a win-win, even though it's a new and semi-novel program, only one year really in this area.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is the revision of Board Policy 4.60, which was handed out to you this evening. And this is informational only.
Right, we'll vote on it next month. And if you look in the yellow, it is just looking for pre-qualification of bidders, so that they have the capital development board, the C V B, pre-qualification.
And this is what the board had requested a month or two ago.
To, yeah, to prequalify all bidders. And so this is the language that was recommended by Mr. Jack Sack through, to the Kean, who worked with us on some of our labor and building projects. So he developed this language for review, and at next month, that would be the additional language that we would be looking at for any capital or building projects.
Item number six is the permission to bid the Merkisboro Middle School H V A C Phase III project. Who's handling this?
Who's talking?
Mr. Seifer, I mean, we went through the plans last Monday.
Yeah.
And did...
No, we're making revisions.
Mr. Carrington, Mr. Ripley, myself, your architect, I lost his name.
Jeremy.
Jeremy, and then the two of us went through the plans and identified some areas where we thought...
Changes.
Changes were needed, and so just formalizing those plans and then going up for bid to finish that third phase of the middle school.
Right, and the bid probably will fall after your October board meeting, it more likely will anyway, for November board approval.
Will this be the last phase for that school? This is, this is the final one?
For H V A C.
Okay.
But this takes care of all the classrooms, all the locker rooms, all the, what's left office spaces. One of my best teachers' lounge corridors, roofing on the main part of the building, roofing on the little gym. It's upgrading all your H V A C everywhere, getting rid of all the window units, replacing the window units with windows. So this will be the most costly of the phases?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So will there be, oh, sorry, will there be any integration between the systems, or...
Yep, there will be a building management system that will take everything we've done previous, tie everything together. So Aaron can look on his phone or laptop and...
So you have one control system for all the...
Right. So for years, we've been talking about remodeling the middle school, and then I think last year around this time, or maybe it was the year before, we talked about moving the cafeteria to the other side, and where's, what's happening with that? And will this...
This won't affect...
Mess that up?
This won't affect that, because what we did this past summer for the cafeteria should take care of if you move classrooms down there. And what we're doing down at that end is rooftop equipment, which would take care of the cafeteria kitchen if you moved it down there. The classrooms are a completely, totally different type of system. It's a V R F system. It's a, each classroom will have a, what's called ceiling cassette, that's ducked off of it, and it's, you know, everything goes up to the roof, and teachers have a little more control over the rooms and that type of stuff.
So is there anything we'd have to look at if we were planning to do that, that we should do while you're doing that or bid out on it?
It'd be ideal if we could do it all at one time, but...
So you can't, you can't get all that done on one Sunday, right?
No. This next phase is going to, and it's going to be a lot of pain for everybody in that school, because we're going to have to move teacher back and forth to get the job done. There's no way around it.
We'll have to start before summer.
Yeah, you have to. We'll start probably Christmas break. They'll get as much done as they can in two, three weeks, but it's not going to be a lot. But we've worked out a plan to, with Steve and Mr. Keener, to do the west end first, then they can move, because those are smaller classes. Move them into different areas, move bigger classes down there, we start taking care of the stacks of classrooms. There's three stacks of classrooms. So probably try and do like four classrooms at a time.
Jim, as we vote on, you know, permission to bid on what we just talked about with the state capital development, do you see a significant decrease in the amount of capable bidders once that we approve this?
No, and for the most part, everybody that bids your projects, others than maybe one or two, will still be able to bid it.
And that was one of the things that we, like, did the last three projects and put all of the bidders for, and only one out of the last three projects had, did not have that qualification, so.
We're going to be shooting ourselves in the foot that way.
Yeah, just give us a level of protection.
And quite honestly, we use that language on every project except for school project.
Okay, fair enough.
Because it's, we do so much state work that it's required.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the permission to bid the Middle School H V A C Phase III project.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Rundy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number seven is the approval of the financial advisory agreement with P M A Securities, which is enclosure number eight.
You may recall when we sold our last bonds in 2019, that we did work with P M A as financial advisor. This is a little different this time, because we were working directly, you know, the underwriter was doing a little bit more for us in the past. And so the reason we started using a financial advisor is the financial advisor, you know, we're their client. An underwriter has to treat the buyer and seller of bonds equally, and when you have a financial advisor, they are doing everything, you know, regarding that issue of the alternate revenue, I can't speak, alternate revenue bonds. They would actually prepare the bond offerings, you know, work with that bond underwriter, and then, you know, on regards to fairness of the price and yields of the bonds. So found that to be, not just an easier, but, you know, I think we got more bang for our buck using a financial advisor. I made a comment last time between, with our bond legal counsel and the underwriter and the financial advisor. I just want the best.
I just want the best price because that's what the board expects, so go play nice in the sandbox and get us the best deal. So that, you know, that's kind of what the financial advisor does and P M A is very reputable, we've worked with them very well in the past. So I would say that the, the dollar amount on the bond, because we started with this agreement, we are not tied to, to, you know, we're going to sell bonds for this amount, is what the agreement says with P M A. May or may not be what we actually end up selling those bonds for, but they, they said that, you know, it's the agreement, it's not the amount of the bonds. And then what we end up paying them for services, it depends on, you know, the, the total price of the bonds and what we actually sell. So it would be administration's recommendation that the board approve the financial advisory agreement with, with P M A at this time. So we can get our bonds process rolling.
There's no questions and I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Rundy?
Yes, motion carries, item number eight is the Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of General Obligation Alternate Bonds in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed 5.5 Million for the Purpose of Altering, Repairing, and Equipping School Buildings and Facilities of the District and Improving the Sites Thereof.
And this is also pretty much exactly what you saw in 2019 when we did our last bond issue in the spring. And this would be our largest bond issued yet. I anticipate we, when it comes time to sell the bonds, which probably will be in December, that we may be able to sell bonds for less than this. But for us, you know, we don't, it's a three-meeting process in order to, to get to the ultimate sale of the bonds. So if we don't, we need to make sure that we cover our bases and set that, that not to exceed limit high enough to cover, you know, when we open the bids, any contingencies, the remainder of our A and E fees, because we don't want to have to take another bite at it and come back and find out when we open the bids, oh, wow, we didn't, we didn't sell bonds for enough. We can always come back less and sell the bonds for a lot less, but we have to go through that process again if we, if we need more. So I don't, I don't anticipate it will be this much, I'm always hoping for less, not more. But, you know, this will, this will set the stage so we can have the, you know, the public hearing that we have to do and then the final approval of the sale of the bonds. And we do, I kind of worked through the numbers again, but when we sold the 2019 bonds originally, we thought we would be able to do Phase Two, all of the work we're doing now, at, you know, at one time, and it was just too much. So when we did the, the study with Stiefel, with the underwriters and looked at what those bonds would look like, what our payment structure would look like, do we have the capacity with the county facility sales tax? We actually did, looked at a bond sale of nine and a half million when we were trying to structure that and see what, if we could make that work. And so between the, the two, we did, I think it was 2.5, a little under three million in 2019. And this would be, so, you know, we're less than eight and a half million if we sell the max amount here. So, you know, based on those, those numbers, we do have the, the capacity, the county facility sales tax will support a bond sale, looking at repaying them in 20 years, because that's, that's less than what, you know, more than a million dollars less than what we originally looked at in 2019, we were going to do the project all as well.
Any questions for the board? And I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rundy?
Yes, motion carries, last item is the Memorandum of Understanding to Add Two Members to the Curriculum Council and that was also handed out to you this evening.
And this is to add the curriculum coordinator for Six through Twelve, Heather Sonny, and, and an additional at-large member so that it would still stay balanced. So it was a discussion that we had with the association last week and they were in total agreement that that would be appropriate to add. So we'll work together on identifying a certified at-large member to add to the committee and then having both pieces of the puzzle, the Six through Twelve, or the K to Five and the Six through Twelve curriculum piece. So that's, that's the change, so this, this M O A memorandum agreement will, is for the duration of this contract and then we'll build it into next, right.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
So move.
Second?
They both said it at the same time.
So I said the K to Five.
Okay, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we have a need to go into closed session. Let's make the motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section Two of the Open Meetings Act Five, all Martin Powell statutes, 120 to C, to review the appointment, appointment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against them, an employee that determines the release, and number two pending or threatened litigation. And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Rundy?
Yes, motion carries, let's take five minutes.